Trustee Borninski.
Good evening.
Record reflect that trustee Foster is absent and trustee Ganguly is absent. Supervisor Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
The record reflect clerk Seagris is in attendance, treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
And trustee Snyderman.
I am present.
Thank you. Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. To start things off, we're going to have a presentation from our youth advisory council. So you can please go to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you again for providing us the opportunity to speak on behalf of the entire Youth Advisory Council. I am Vibhishri Peddi and I am the current president of this council.
And I'm Shreesh Agarjum and I am the current board member of this council.
In our last attendance at the Board of Trustees meeting, we had shared that the annual grant cycle had commenced. Eligible programs had to serve youth in the Plymouth Canton area. This year, we had a cumulative amount of $1,524 to distribute in grants. Four organizations had applied for grants, requesting between $100 to $1,500. However, seeing how there wasn't enough bandwidth within the grant money to support all, a thorough assessment was completed for each organization.
Each application was evaluated through four criterias: youth involvement, plausibility, cost effectiveness, and the state of organization. Through this, it was determined that the recipients of the grand award would be PCS Penguins for new equipment and money to advertise and APAC for club supplies. PCS Penguins, a girl hockey team, was awarded $850 and APAC, or Asian Pacific American Club, was awarded $674.
This past month, one of our board members also attended the PCCS School Safety Panel to discuss the recent lockdown at the Plymouth Canton Educational Park.
In this meeting, PCCS approach to the lockdown was reflected upon so as to determine how to better protect and handle these situations. She had mentioned that this meeting was beneficial, but she had wished more students were invited to that event, as the topic of school safety affects them the most.
We are also in the process of drafting our youth program evaluation assessment tool, which is designed to help programs and organizations specifically serving youth identify areas for growth. Through this tool, seed, developing, and matured programs alike can maximize their impact on members in the present and future. There are four objectives, namely accessibility, readiness, reflection, and engagement, with various sub-objectives where every organization can have the opportunity to self-evaluate using a one-to-five Likert scale.
Last month, our DEI board focused on Women's History Month. The board consisted of women that impacted the world and made a difference. We kept unique quotes that they have said to empower the women and what they had accomplished. Some women that were on the board were Michelle Obama, Betty White, and Ruth Bader Ginsburg. We created a cahoot where we tested the kids at the Block Youth and Teen Center on who said which quote. They had a fun time.
And this month for April, we celebrate the holy month of Ramadan. In addition to a board reading Ramadan Kareem, or Blessed Ramadan, there will also be an activity later this week. Seeing that Ramadan is considered a month of self-growth and consciousness for many, kids at the Block Youth and Teen Center will have the opportunity to pick a goal for the month and celebrate their work towards achieving it. Do you have any questions?
Thanks for coming back and reporting on where the money was spent. It sounds like all good programs. How did you enjoy the process of... And how did the whole board enjoy the process of making those decisions?
We had to do an individual assessment for each one, and we certainly had different opinions. But in the end, it was effective because we had similar thoughts in each one since we had a pretty thorough and clear assessment tool for each.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We really appreciate your report again. We hope you get to stay for as much as the meeting as you can and learn and give us some feedback. But thank you for the report and like trustee Snyderman said, really good opportunity to see where you spent the money and how you are cooperating and learning how to budget. That's a... I think that'll be... Serve you well in the years to come. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the agenda as amended, moving the resolutions ahead of public comment and adding R2, which is a resolution demanding impacted GLWA member communities not be responsible for the city of Highland Park's GLWA debt. Removing item C1, consider remand of amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances regarding blessing rezoning to the Planning Commission from the consent calendar and place it on the general calendar as item G0, in the interest of time. And adding item C6, consider approval of severance and release agreement with Corporation Council. And is that it?
That is it.
Okay.
Are we removing one other thing? Yeah, let me check.
Particular item?
Are you asking about removing an item that is not currently on our agenda?
No.
Yes. What do you think is missing?
I thought maybe we were removing one more item. Let me see. G8?
The high-speed printer?
Oh, I must not have an up-to-date agenda.
Oh, correct. That one was removed. On Monday, they sent out an updated agenda online.
Okay, so you're comfortable with the motion as...
Have a support?
Support.
Motion made by clerk Seagris, supported by treasurer Slavens. All in favor adopting the agenda as stated?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. The next item is approval of the minutes for March 8th, 22nd, 29th, and April 5th, 2022.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by clerk Seagris, supported by treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, the next item on the agenda is a resolution in recognition of the 70th anniversary of the Plymouth Canton branch of the American Association of University Women. So if we can please have them come up while I read this. Our AAUW team, come on up to the podium. Thank you. Thank you. Would you please introduce yourselves?
My name is Kay Papor.
I'm Becky Koppenheber.
Welcome, welcome. So read this, "The Resolution in Recognition of the 70th Anniversary of the Plymouth Canton Branch of the American Association of University Women, AAUW. Whereas the American Association of University Women officially founded in 1881, is a nonprofit organization that advances equity for women and girls through advocacy, education, and research, whose mission is to advance gender equity for women and girls through research, education, and advocacy. Whereas the Michigan AAUW is celebrating its 100th anniversary in 2022. Whereas this year marks the 70th anniversary of the Plymouth Canton branch of the AAUW, and on April 21st, they will be celebrating that milestone as well as honoring one of their original members. Whereas the Plymouth Canton American Association of University Women are an active branch that is committed to achieving equity for women and girls, and whereas the Plymouth Canton American Association of University Women yearly provide a live drama for children of all ages, which raises the majority of scholarship monies for local women, now therefore be it, resolve that the Canton Township Board of Trustees recognizes April 21st, 2022, as the 70th anniversary of the Plymouth Canton branch of the American Association of University Women, and is grateful for the work on behalf of women and girls." Thank you.
Support.
Motion made by clerk Seagris, supported by clerk Seagris. I'm sorry, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Great, thank you. Would you like to say anything about the AAUW?
Said it all.
Any board questions or comments?
Thank you for all you do.
So here, we want to give this to you. Our next item on the agenda is the GLWA impacted member communities for the city of Highland Park's GLWA debt.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution demanding impacted GLWA member communities not be held responsible for the city of Highland Park's GLWA debt. Whereas the Canton Township is comprised of 98,659 residents and 2,500 businesses who receive water from Great Lakes Water Authority, GLWA. Whereas Wayne County receives water services from GLWA and Canton Township is a paying member of the GLWA. Whereas the state of Michigan, the state, has a direct role in GLWA providing water services to the city of Highland Park. Whereas the state requested then Detroit Water and Sewer Department, or DAWSD, provide emergency water services to the city of Highland Park because the state determined Highland Park's water treatment plant was creating a public health risk to its residents. Whereas on November 12th, 2012, the state estimated the repairs to the water treatment plant were to be completed in three to four days. Whereas neither the state or the city of Highland Park repaired the water treatment plant and it remains shuttered to this day. Whereas the city of Highland Park has paid less than 1% of their water services charges since 2012 accumulating $54,233,700 in debt to GLWA for both water and sewer services. And should their payment pattern continue, this debt will rise to $60,977,600 by the end of fiscal year 23. Whereas the city of Highland Park's debt has now been allocated to the 87 other GLWA member communities, including Canton Township. Whereas of the $54,233,700 debt Highland Park has accumulated since 2012, $330,000 has been charged to the paying members in Canton Township community. And whereas of the $60,977,600 debt that will be accumulated by the end of 2023, a total of $360,000 will have been charged to the paying members in Canton Township community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees, the Charred Township of Canton, hereby request the city of Highland Park's water not be shut off due to the health and welfare of its residents and that the state intervene in payments to GLWA for the city of Highland Park's past water usage. Hereby requests the state and GLWA not require the 87 paying member communities to pay for the city of Highland Park's debt to GLWA. Will place any monies required for the city of Highland Park's water bill in escrow and request the state intervene and take over the past and future water bills while working with the city of Highland Park to begin usage payments. Hereby requests the state to become directly involved in solving this dispute. Request the state reimburse the township for the costs that has already been paid towards this debt. Hereby implores the state to develop a long-term infrastructure solution to address the water and sewer issues in Highland Park. Calls on the state of Michigan and the legislature to create a system in which the situation of non-payment and communities being charged, the non-payment cannot happen again in the future. And hereby requests that our state legislators and our Wayne County commissioners call on the state to not require impacted member partner communities to pay the city of Highland Park's debt to the GLWA and that the state of Michigan reimburse the debt amounts already paid.
Deport.
Motion made by clerk Seagris, supported by trustee Borninski. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay, let's see, GLWA, now we move on to... So the next item on the agenda are the public comments on agenda items only.
Madam Supervisor, I make the motion that we pay the bills.
Have a support?
Support.
Motion made by treasurer Slavens, supported by trustee Borninski, to pay the bills. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, motion passes. All right, so we'll go into public comment on agenda items only. I just noticed because there are a lot... We've gotten a lot of emails and calls and I know there's a lot of people here, I just want to let everybody know the agenda item that you're probably all hear about. So our meeting opens with the public comments on agenda item. And I know you're here to talk about the item concerning the rezoning of parcel, the blessings parcel on Warren Road and Napier Road. So I want to inform everyone that you're free to comment on this item, but I want to be open and transparent with all the commenter, attendees, and with anyone listening to the meeting. The only action on this item tonight by the Canton Board of Trustees is a remand of this to the Planning Commission because the Planning Commission failed to provide any factual basis to support their decision to deny those rezoning of the parcel. So this is a procedural manner for the compliance with state law. If the Board of Trustees votes to remand the item to the Planning Commission, then there will be another public hearing before the Planning Commission. You're welcome to attend that meeting and make comments on the request to rezone the property. So if you're going to make a comment, please remember to state your name and you'll have a three-minute limit to make your comment. I'll put a clock up so everybody can watch their time. But also, just to let you know, you can line up at the podium, give us your name, and there won't be a back and forth. We'll just listen to public comment right now for three minutes each. And please remember also in the... You know, if you look around you, if a lot of people have the same thing to say, you don't have to repeat what the person before you said. If you want to add on to it, that's fine. That would just help get everybody through what they want to say tonight. Okay, so we will start. Let me get this clock up. Let me see. And share it. So if you want to make a comment, you can head up to the podium, get in line at the podium. So this is just going to... This is going to be remanded again. It'll be remanded back to the Planning Commission. So... But if you want to make your comments, you're welcome to. But there will be another public hearing, again, another public hearing at the Planning Commission. So if anyone would like to go up, you can see the clock and I will start it. Anyone with public comment tonight on the agenda items? So Kristin Kolb, our attorney for...
One moment, just real quickly, because we record the meeting, we stream the meeting, we put the meetings up on YouTube, any comments from the audience
That cannot be heard.
will not be picked up by anybody participating virtually or watching this meeting in the future. So we would ask, if you want to be heard, a part of the public record, ask a question, make a comment, please do so at the podium so that everybody can hear what you have to say. Any comments from the audience, we'll hear it, but we can't really answer a question without everybody understanding what that question is. So everything that you just said was not picked up by anybody participating from home. It was just a point of clarification about the procedural method that we're using tonight, about why we are doing that, because there was a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission. And so...
I hate to interrupt. I know madam supervisor had asked, maybe we have counsel come up and maybe explain, clarify what we're doing tonight? Yeah, thank you.
Or whichever microphone you can get to.
Good evening. Kristin Kolb, Corporation Counsel for a couple more days. First of all, I need to clarify something the supervisor said. There will not be another public hearing at the Planning Commission. The public hearing has been held, it's done. The Planning Commission can opt to reopen it, but as a matter of course, there will not be another hearing in front of the Planning Commission. The board, when it is ready to take action, can schedule a public hearing in front of this body at that time. But if the action is to remand, that's purely, again, a procedural issue. The Planning Commission has to remake their motion. And the comment from the lady in the audience was there were lots of facts presented. However, the motion that was made by the Planning Commission did not provide any bases under the zoning ordinance for denying the rezoning request. The ordinance specifically provides a list of considerations that the Planning Commission has to hear, and then if any of those are... Lead to a cause to deny the rezoning, they must be specifically stated in the motion. The Planning Commission violated the township ordinance by not listing the reasons that the request was inconsistent or violated the... Either the master plan or the zoning ordinance. The remand is to get the Planning Commission to specifically identify the reasons under the zoning ordinance and the Zoning Enabling Act that the rezoning request is being denied.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board on that?
Nope. Thank you. So we can still take public comment, correct, Kristin? So wait, a public comment for three minutes each and then give the next person...
To further clarify, because I think we're all thinking this. So the comments that are made tonight, will those at least go to the Planning Commission to also be included as facts to be presented if this is remanded? So what is spoken today will be included along with the facts that were originally presented during the open hearing?
Kristin, correct me if I'm wrong. Basically, the Planning Commission would hear the facts at the Planning Commission meeting and do it subsequently there. You can use that microphone back there.
The remand to the Planning Commission and any subsequent action by the Planning Commission will be based on what has already been presented to the board. Again, there's not a new presentation, there's not a new public hearing. The public hearing and the presentation from the property owners has occurred. So they are being purely asked to take the information that was previously provided and state the reasons that they denied the request.
So what is not clear then is why were those facts not originally... The facts that were presented at the original hearing, why were those not included? So that makes us feel like all of us who were present at the original hearing, who presented facts, went unheard. And now there's something that's going to happen where now we cannot partake and include information which we all came with today that we do feel like should be included in that decision-making process, and now we're being shut out. It sounds like there's not going to be other opportunity.
You can go to the public comment at the Planning Commission and comment all again. Every Planning Commission meeting has a public comment time.
Okay. Will comments tonight also be given to the Planning Commission?
Planning Commission can read that, but you should... If you want to make comments, you'd make them at the Planning Commission. We're just remanding it back to the Planning Commission. So that might change your minds about speaking tonight or waiting to the Planning Commission.
So what is presented tonight, could that prevent it from being remanded?
No, the board will discuss that when we get to that item.
Will the Planning Commission be voting again if you remand it? Or have they already voted?
No, they will vote when it gets back to them.
So they don't have any other public comment that they want? They're just going to vote again?
There will be public comment at the Planning Commission. So would you like to comment? Would you...
I'm not first in line, so...
Okay.
I was... My name is Lee McDonough. I've lived in Canton Township for 50 years and in Pilgrim Hills specifically. My complaints are the fact that it takes a mountain of complaints to move Wayne County to grade our roads. And I'm concerned that with all the new homes and all these new cars, that our roads will be in worse shape than they are now and we'll never get them graded. That's number one. Number two, are they going to... Is the pulte going to replace every tree that they destroy on that property? Are they going to install solar panels for those homes? And if they're not going to install solar panels with all of the electric vehicles being used, excuse me, are they going to have enough ampage that they will operate on their own grid and not take from Pilgrim Hills grid? Because we've endured many, many power outages in Pilgrim Hills. And we don't want... I don't want our power overtaken by the new subdivision. The other thing is that there's not enough... You know, you need to have a certain ampage to have electric vehicles, and I'm sure people who have them know about how much they need. But I'm just concerned there's not going to be any of that there. So those are my major concerns. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm Jan Majanka. I'm a retired Plymouth Canton speech pathologist. I've lived next to that property for 44 years. It's beautiful. Have any one of you walked the property? I request you do that because as you walk down into the property, it goes downhill, which is a concern because water will wash right into our property and we already are soggy back there. But in the middle of that property is an enormous tree, probably the oldest tree in Canton Township. All of you could circle around, hold hands, and barely get around the tree. That's how big the trunk is. It's amazing. That would probably be cut down. As you go, then there's a creek, which you know is going to get polluted when construction comes in and they go across the creek to build homes all the way out to Napier. Also, on that property going out to Napier, the Noakes who used to live on Napier, their son did a lot of digging and research back there, and there are a lot of Indian arrowheads, which makes you think that maybe there was an Indian settlement or maybe it was a burial ground. It's kind of sacred land. But... And there's a hill. Once you go over the creek, there's a hill that goes up. It's all treed. They would have... They can't build houses unless they do it up on the ridge. They'd have to take all that ground down, which would affect the water down and where the water went. So those are my concerns, the stream in the back, also the bridges. There's a bridge on Warren Road, which the guard rail is about this tall. And it's only been repaired in 44 years, once. So the guard rail is here and it's all washed out underneath several sections of it. It doesn't protect anything. A car could go over into that creek so easily. But it would never support construction equipment. And then there's another bridge because the stream goes under Napier and it's over on Napier, and that too, isn't big enough to support construction equipment. I moved from a subdivision in Canton out there 44 years ago because I wanted the country. And it was zoned three-acre lots so we could have a horse if you had three acres. We have almost four. And we had two horses. And it's so peaceful and quiet. We have a herd of deer. We have at least seven or eight in our backyard every night, seven or eight, or sometimes as many as 20 in our front yard. So where are they going to go? So I'm sort of speaking for them too. And Fox, also...
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay.
Next, please.
My name is Beth Vaughn. I live on Hanford Road. I'm concerned, based on what I'm hearing, that this issue is going back to the Planning Commission. And the reason I'm concerned is because when we had our last meeting, we had a wonderful support group of neighbors, residents, and we had some experts here, even from the Friends of the Rouge, among other people. And they had a lot to say about the geography of this particular land, the fact that there is streams on both sides, the fact that it is very hilly, and what potential damage could come from removing all of the soil and the trees to us surrounding neighbors. could come from removing all of the soil and the trees to us surrounding neighbors. So I'm concerned that we don't have that person here to be speaking, so that when this does go to the Planning Commission, those voices are not going to be heard. I am not an expert. But what I can tell you is, in my yard, I no longer have, you know, a week or two of my, section of my yard wet. It is now three months of it wet, constantly. It's unusable when they put the subdivision behind my 1890 farmhouse. So I understand that development has to happen, but my concern is, is that we're just chipping away everything. And we're just chipping away too much. And we really need to be careful and thoughtful about what we do with this piece of land. So I am concerned about this Planning Commission meeting. I hope that the residents that have something to say this evening, come up and say it. And if they know a lot more about this issue than I do, I hope that they, they express it. There's a lot more than just, you know, the look of the neighborhood that is going to be changing. It is the layout, it is the, it is the water, it is the, the infrastructure itself that's going to be changing, that is a concern for everybody. Not just the people that live around us, but for the, for the roads, for the livability of this, this corner of, of neighborhood that we have. I'm just wondering, you know, what, what is going to happen after this meeting? There was an overwhelming, overwhelming, resounding, I don't want to say rejection, it's a harsh word, but nobody wanted this rezoning to happen for a lot of logical reasons. And I really hope that people speak up, and that our voices are heard now, and when the Planning Commission meets. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Teresa Savage. I live at 3976 Napier Road. And I have previously sent everybody on the Board a document, which explains why the amendment, the zoning amendment, did not meet five out of the 10 rezoning standards of review, in my opinion, and explained why the additional review consideration should not be considered. See, this is more data that you're giving the Planning Commission for their next meeting, but we're not allowed to speak at the next meeting. So that's kind of a, you know, something that I'm not happy about. But today, I would like to talk about the future land use map. And right now, you guys can't see this, but here's the current zoning of Canton Township. And we're up here, and there's a lot of, all the green areas are residential, rural residential, which we're part of. And here's the 2012 future land usage map. And up here, we're still in green, of residential rural. But this residential rural was five house, one house per five acres. Now it's been redesigned and redefined to one house per two acres, okay? And this was in the 2017 DDA comprehensive master plan. Now, what's online is the current one, and this one's, it's removed. It's been removed. And it's dated 2020. So people telling you that this stuff is set in gold, and it can't be changed, it's been changed since the 2017 master plan's been done. So what this means is, the direction of the township is, everything in Northwest Canton is going to be one house per acre. So in five, 10, 15 years, there's going to be three to four times as many houses in Northwest Canton, because the zoning now is recommended to do so. So I would like to put a stop to this now, and have the Northwest Canton Residents' Future Land Use Map put into the, given to the Canton Commission. And I would like to change the two miles of Napier Road between Ford and Plymouth, the one mile of Hanford Road between Napier and Ridge, the half-mile of Warren Road that's not paved, and even the one mile of Ridge Road between Warren and Plymouth, and Guide Road. I would like to change all of the property back to RR for future, and change RR definition to one house per five acres. And the Planning Commission holds public workshops to gather information from residents. Nobody asked me about this when they-
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please. Next. No, please come on up. Please come on up. Next.
I would like to give my three minutes to Terry to finish up, please.
So I would like to include an additional review for consideration that goes back to the Planning Commission. And I want, as soon as possible, the future zoning to be put back to RR. Jeez, I can't have my tongue here. This idea is in line with the master plan. It states, on page 21, it highlights the distinct natural features of Northwest Canton. Objective 3.3 on page 44 states Canton Township shall strive to maintain a rural atmosphere of the western portion of the community. And in 2016, when rezoning the southwest corner of Warren and Ridge, the developer stated, and you can see this in the minutes, that the Fellows Creek has created a good boundary between rural residential and R1 single-family residential. So I guess now, they don't want us to remember that this was said, that we allowed them to rezone that, we accepted it as a community, but now they want to push the boundary further westward. And they've talked about cluster development, but the definition in the master plan states it only maintains a semi-rural character. It's not rural. So this is a public meeting. Here are the affected residents. I'm going to get some input. Who would like to see the future land usage map have RR in it, where one house is on five acres? Please raise your hand. Who would not like to? Who would like to see one house per acre? There's your input. So-
Thank you. Please keep going. Please keep going.
In closing, not only should the rezoning amendment be vetoed, but the future land map needs to change to reflect the Board's objective for Northwest Canton, and what we, the residents in Northwest Canton, want. Both the Township Board and the Planning Commission should be primarily concerned with the welfare and enjoyment of the current Township residents. If the rezoning goes through, and R1 stays on the future land use map, this says the Township doesn't care about our input, will bow to misleading and seemingly deceptive arguments provided by a developer, and isn't willing to fight for the residents who already live here. It will be a domino effect, and mark my words, in five to 10 years, one house per acre, all in Northwest Canton. I am against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, so I just want to address one of the items as to why they're doing the remand. And one of the issues was flooding was discussed during the Planning Commission at the public hearing. The FEMA floor plan map indicates that there are no flood plans on the subjected site. The stormwater management of the proposed development is addressed later in the process at the time of the site review. What I wanted to address with that is, if you look at Canton's elevation relief map, and you overlay that with the waterways, that, the creeks that are in our general area, and I would be happy to bring this up for you guys to take a look at this, but we are already, especially those of us on Thornwood Street, which is some of the lowest elevation that is in that surrounding neighborhoods, are already seeing more erosion and more flooding this year than we have in previous years, just from the development that has been put at Warren and Ridge Road. And that's because of the increased stress that is being put on Fellows Creek. This particular site is one of the highest elevations in that particular neighborhood, and that part of Fellows Creek runs right through. And our concern, especially for those of us that are off of Thornwood Street, is that that increased pressure of amount of water that could then flow down into Fellows Creek could put some of our homes potentially underwater. What we're seeing in our backyards right now, just so that I can give some context, is we are currently seeing in my yard where the creek runs behind, I mean, our neighbor, and I know, you know, there's people here that can attest to this, I mean, their entire yard completely floods over because part of the creek runs right through their yard. Ours, it runs behind. We're seeing that creek now overflow since that development was put at Ridge and Warren. It's, it's created almost a second creek. We're seeing, the back half of our lot is eroding off into the wooded area. We're seeing trees fall over. And we're also seeing more destruction, even just coming down Warren Road, than we have ever before. And if you were to just take a drive down Warren Road and look left or right as soon as you hit where the pavement turns to dirt road, you will see all of the fallen trees from the immense amount of erosion that has occurred just of this last year. And it's not because this year is more wet, it is because of that development that was put there. So this, being at the elevation that it is, and I'm happy to give you guys a copy of this elevation map, I brought printouts of it, that creek where it runs right through also runs back behind all of those neighborhoods, and also connects back up to that area where Ridge and Warren is. So we're just going to continue to put increased stress on that particular part of Fellows Creek, which is not going to just affect our specific community, but that is also going to continue to affect the Rouge, and probably a lot of other of the Down River communities as well. So I'll just, if I can, just-
We also have it online here. We can see it online. But thank you.
...up, like, northwest corner here is where the development is.
Yep. We're familiar with that.
This doesn't show Fellows Creek, but I could show you on this map if you'd like to see.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Do you want to see where Fellows Creek is?
We know, we have, we have the electronic copies. Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
One person on the Zoom that would like to speak as well, for Beth.
Okay, I'll start. Let me finish the room. Anyone else in the room? Please could go up to the podium?
Voice is always kind of a little gruff. I'm just not clear on one thing totally. We're having to resubmit this to the zoning committee because it wasn't made clear to Pulte Company why their zoning, rezoning wasn't granted? It wasn't made clear to them why they're not getting the rezoning? Am I wrong? That they can't rezone down to the R1?
We'll talk about it more in the, when we talk, so go ahead. Any other comments?
Well, the question I have is, why don't they have to request why they should be rezoned? See, I'm not, why they should be allowed to read, to go down? Like, why do we have to explain to them why they were rejected? I don't, I don't quite get it. I know, maybe I'm not making myself clear. I probably am not. Why is this being, going to be reheard again?
Sir, this is public comment. We, the Board will discuss it when it comes to that item, so we're just listening to you right now.
Okay. Well, I mean, am I right in that or not? I just don't understand if, why we would have to explain, like, if we tell the Pulte Company, "No, your request has been denied." So we didn't make it clear enough to them why it was denied? Basically, is that, in a nutshell?
We can talk about it a little bit more. But if that's your question, the question's noted. Thank you. Do you have any other comments?
Well, no. I mean, I agree with the people, it's a-
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments in the room before I go online?
I've been a resident of the Northwest Canton area for about 30 years. I'm at 51121 Topper Court. My neighbor, Mr. Wade, used to, as you know, be part of your commission a number of years back. And I used to call in and listen and everything else, and I've, when we first moved out here, everything west of Canton Center Road was going to be, if you recall, the Preservation Act. And I've seen it creep up closer and closer throughout the years. But even back, before they were putting in the subdivisions on Ridge Road, right here, out of the very mouths of the Commissioners, that area was referred to as the jewel, I quote, "The Jewel of Canton." And I think you've heard from these folks here that, you know, it's, we have the Natural Beauty Roads on three of the sides. Can you hear me okay?
No.
Yeah, you might have to get closer probably to the microphone.
As I was saying, it's, it's, it's been referred to as the Jewel of Canton Center, that area. And it's surrounded by Natural Beauty Roads. And it's, it's a fragile environment, and that's what we're hearing from everybody. And I, I personally do not want to see the density of the population increase. It's that simple. And we moved out there for, for a reason. I think virtually everybody out there feels the same way. I don't know if you'll listen. It's never worked in the past, but out of your own mouths, that area was the Jewel of Canton. All right? And you'll destroy it. And I, sometimes I feel like we're casting pearls before swine. And there's nobody out there that wants it. And we'll see what happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone else in the room? Okay.
Good evening. My wife and I built our house out on Country Drive, which is right off of Hanford, between just about 150 yards west of Napier. The area you're speaking of, I believe, was owned by Rebecca Mars many years ago, and we're very familiar with Grandfather Oak. I have pictures of people, four and five of us, with our arms around it. That was a wetland area, to the best of our knowledge, and everything that you've heard tonight is, is pretty much true. So my question is, as an engineer, I want to know, what is the infrastructure going to look like, as far as how many, number one, how many houses is, is Pulte asking to build? And as we, as we understand, it doesn't matter the areas that they, that they are not allowed to build. If there's 50 acres, and I think it, what is it, 30 acres, 31 acres? They're going to, they're going to petition to build 31 houses, even if there's only 20 acres that can be built upon, in an R1. That's my understanding. I may be incorrect, and you can correct me later if I'm wrong. So that means you're going to have density. You're also going to have, on the order of 60 more automobiles, because if it's 30 houses, it's about two houses per, two automobiles per residence. So that means the roads need to be potentially upgraded. Is Pulte going to put in new roads? And you're going to be bringing in water and sewage. Possibly. Or are you going to drill wells and have septic fields, like the rest of us have? So we want to understand the infrastructure, because as infrastructure comes in, it disrupts the natural terrain, it disrupts the natural systems. I want to understand the plans. Yes, there's a lot of emotion about, "It's beautiful, and we have turkeys, and we have deer, and we have all kinds of wild animals." And yes, they need a place to be, and they will be pushed out. But what's going to happen as far as the infrastructure goes? And, and I want to see it from an engineering standpoint, because from that standpoint, then we can talk to geologists and hydrologists, and the people who are experts, and find out from their standpoint, what is this going to do to the region? And that's, I, I'm sorry we missed the last meeting, because maybe the hydrologists and the geologists and other people were here, but I haven't heard anything that supports tearing up that, that area yet. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
I'm Paul West from 4540 Napier Road. A couple things. I wanted to just ask a question, the same question to you that I asked to the Planning Commission. What is, what is the vision driving the zoning changes that we seek, that you seek to, to accomplish here? I mean, where are we all going with this? What do we want Canton to be 10 years from now, 20, 25 years from now? Okay? I mean, we're, we're running out of land, we've pretty much almost hit the Pacific here. We've marched from east to west, and we really are running out. Someone needs to whisper in Pulte's ear to find another community, to, to start over again, with, with a new governmental community that they need to get close with, and establish new relationships, because we're, we're really running out of, of land here. This area in, in question, I don't, personally, I would like to see it become a nature center. Okay? I wouldn't even want to see houses built there. And I think that our beautiful little area in Canton needs, we owe something back to the rest of the community. We don't want, we're not selfish people. We don't want to hoard this all for ourselves. And, and a lot of people do come out to our area- And, and a lot of people do come out to our area, especially on the weekends, they'll ride their bikes, they'll walk, okay? I think we should make other things available for them and for the, and for the kids to come out. I'd like to see Polte buy it. We can call it Polte Nature Park. Maybe they can build a home or two that's, that's tapping into, I know that they've got a research group that's looking at sustainability and other things. We'll showcase one of those houses. Maybe drum up some new business and, and change your brand a little bit. There's, there's a lot of things we can do with that property. It is unique. It's not like all the other thirty-one acres that's been available. It's just flat land that's open, okay? It's a one of a kind, and I think we have to treat it as something extremely precious. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Yeah, my husband spoke a moment ago. I just hope that you guys value the character of Canton, which is unique. It doesn't have to be the piece of property you live on. Every time I, we live on Hanford, a little east of Napier. But every time I drive down Ridge, get to a certain point, and I say, this is the prettiest part of Canton. I, there's value in driving through it. There's value in, in going down a road that hasn't been paved over. Yes, we deal with what comes with that. You know, your car's always dirty, and there's dust on the road and stuff. But it's so worth it. It's so worth it for, maybe the reason why that tree is a symbol of Canton. I hope you'll hold on to that, because it's unique. I know people want to live there. It's, it's a pretty place. And, and I don't want to be greedy either. But is this the wisest use of this piece of property that's not really designed for this? And, and, and I hope you'll just seriously consider the cost. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Any agenda item?
Hello, my name is Heidi Jock. I live at seven seven zero two Berklin. My husband, whom I married two years ago, has had the home for, I think, twenty-eight years. We love it. Prior to this, I lived in the city of Ypsilanti. I love having neighbors near me. This neighborhood is special, and that land, that parcel that's being considered, is extremely special. Homes that would be put in there, could be put anywhere, and people would have that experience. If a developer comes in and they want to put one home per acre, and again, I don't know if that means one acre with a home in the center, or thirty homes in a twenty-acre area, it's going to be like anything else. You know, they're going to look out and see their neighbors, and they're going to want, you know, they're not going to have what we currently have. And I'm in an R1 neighborhood. We are on two acres, though, and I think a number of my neighbors in Pilgrim Hills are on more than one acre, although we were zoned R1, which is one home per acre. The other thing is, and I think Plymouth Hills, because I've looked for information years ago, I don't think it was one developer that went through and developed everything. I think people bought lots, and they had homes custom-built for the lot. Okay, all right. So the homes were developed per that lot. If you walk through the neighborhood, you'll see where there are creeks. You can stop at two places along Thornwood and listen to creeks, that you can hear the water. I think we're going to lose that in that area. I don't want to stop someone from being able to do something beautiful with the land, but I think this would just ruin it. I just don't think this is the right place. And also, quickly, if you look at the R1 that's proposed for the Blessings Lot, it's surrounded by people that have had five-acre lots and such. And to put these people, the R1 in the center, it just seems like tearing out someone's backyard. It's just not the right place for it. The land is much too valuable. And I think we owe it to, to nature to have something that will be maintained. That's why we have the metro parks, by the way. Somebody was a visionary, two people were visionary in the forties, they created the metro parks. And aren't we glad we have those metro parks, that they weren't developed and went only to the richest people? And, and to anybody that wanted to put in a small neighborhood, we're so blessed. And I, I really hope that as the planning commission looks at it, and if it should come to the commission, to the trustees for a vote, that you will think about everyone's wishes here. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in the room? Mine? Sure, we have someone up right now. Okay, you want to go ahead? Go ahead.
I'm going to try and quickly get through these notes. My name is Gwen Dietrich. I live at five oh nine two oh Murray Hill, Pilgrim Hills. I work at the United States Environmental Protection Agency, the Office of Transportation and Air Quality. My focus at the EPA is to increase protection for public health and the environment. My concern here, one, air pollution. You're going to bring in heavy-duty diesel vehicles and equipment, both on-road and off-road. And with this brings greenhouse gas emissions. And I'm speaking of carbon dioxide, nitrogen oxides, particulate matter, which is destructively PM2.5, which will ruin our air quality. And with this destruction, this leveling of land, comes the destruction of the trees. Facts. One tree, one tree in one year absorbs forty-two, forty-eight pounds of carbon dioxide and expels oxygen for you and I to breathe. One acre of trees, and what, this is a thirty-one acre parcel? Flooded with trees, beautiful trees. That yields 2.5 tons of CO2. That's what it eliminates, for you to breathe. Now, I have questions, and I don't expect answers. But this is how we work at the EPA. And I'm not speaking for the EPA. I'm making that clear. Were travel assessments done on the release of greenhouse gas emissions from an increase of traffic in this area? Second, were independent scientific scientists brought in to evaluate the environmental impacts on the air, the flood plains, and the natural habitats of wildlife? What methodology was used? Were the migratory birds that pass through this area and rest? For the effects, what are their effects on their flight patterns?
Thank you, thank you.
Will someone give me three? Thank you, sir. Did Canton look at the disruption of the ecosystem that we pride ourselves in living in this natural preserve community? Canton. I work at the EPA. I live out here, because I believe where my particular home is, is nature. It is the environment, the pure environment. Canton needs to take the lead on sustainable development. All I see is acres and acres of forestry cut down for row houses. Oh my goodness. How many row houses do you need? We need nature. We can talk climate change, be glad to get into it with you. So please, be a leader in preservation of what is left in Canton. Maintaining and protecting this land in existence, maybe a land trust, protecting the rare gem of land that it is. One additional note I have, and this is so unbiased. When service people come out to my home, AT&amp;T DTE, they step out of their vehicle and they say to my sister and I, "This is God's country." And my sister and I go, "What do you mean?" "Oh, anytime we get a call to come out to this area, we refer to it as God's country. This is where you live." I ask you, please, do not destroy God's country, our country, of our beautiful little community that we have and we take pride on. Thank you.
You're going to state the name of the person you're speaking for?
This is from Bernadette Blousky. She lives at seven eight four zero Thornwood in Pilgrim Hills. And this is her comments. So this is not me saying I, this is her saying I. So I want to express my opposition to the proposed blessing rezoning. I also want to express my disagreement with findings stated in Board Packet four twelve twenty-two that the application meets each of the ten rezoning standards of review. Regarding number six, the document states the amendment will not set an inappropriate precedent as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The amendment is not consistent with the plan in numerous ways. The comprehensive plan contains many objectives that are being ignored in this proposed, proposal to rezone and develop this parcel. Comprehensive Master Plan 3.2 objective addresses environmental-sensitive lands. Canton Township shall encourage development which is sensitive to the protection and enhancement of sensitive lands, including those lands containing flood-prone areas and wetlands. The plan further explains that FEMA identified Fellow's Creek, which crosses the blessing property and enters and exits at two places as a floodplain area. The study was updated in 2012. I quote, "Updates are required whenever a construction project modifies the location, cross-section, or capacity of the water course and floodplain. Inadequate planning for development can have an adverse impact on the ability of the rivers and streams to carry stormwater runoff downstream at a rate sufficient to prevent flooding. Care must be taken in the location and design of the new development projects and development discouraged within the hundred-year areas when feasible." I would like to see that update. On the same subject, the Canton Community Watershed Management Strategy includes in the plan addresses stormwater in the community, including stormwater management requirements for new developments, as well as the adoption of an ordinance to prevent pollution and flooding of the Rouge River watershed. Let me point out that the Canton website praises the Fellow Creek Wetland. I quote, "It improves water quality, stabilizes stream banks, reduces pollutants entering the Rouge River, and provides fish and wildlife habitat." Fellow's Creek once had a wide floodplain and a meandering stream bed. Its banks were forested wetlands and open prairie. Drainage for agriculture straightened the channel, reduced plant and animal diversity, and negatively affected water quality in the lower Rouge and Detroit rivers. The Fellow's Creek Wetland seeks to recreate a more natural stream system to more effectively manage stormwater, reduce stream bank erosion, and benefit fish and wildlife. Again, the proposed rezoning is scuttling the plan's objectives, because Fellow's Creek Wetland will be impacted, as, as may the Rouge watershed." Now, I see in the remand document that, that traffic is not considered at this point, but it should be, because Comprehensive Plan Objective 3.3 and Policy 3.3.2 state Canton Township shall, one, strive to maintain the rural atmosphere of the western portions of the community; two, encourage new development in rural areas to design circulation systems which do not adversely affect the maintenance of unpaved roadways and limit direct access to unpaved roadways where possible. We have, we already have an impossible situation with the road maintenance on Apier, Warren, and Pilgrim Hills.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else in, oh, you have, you're next in the room, okay?
I'm Casey Zimmerman, seven two two seven Berklon. I am a school social worker in Dearborn Heights. And as mentioned earlier, the continual building of houses in this area will directly affect the Rouge River. I believe Canton should have the sense of responsibility to adding to the flooding issues to our Downriver communities. Also, I'm concerned about the schools and the student population. More houses means more students, and our schools are already highly populated, yet lack resources for both students and teachers. I feel like at this time, we should be using our funds in conversations about addressing the already present mental health and educational needs of the Canton residents and their, and their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? I'm going to try to switch to online.
I'm Nancy Langenekert. And as people were speaking, I glanced up and I looked at the symbol of Canton that's on the wall behind all of you. And I don't know when that symbol was adopted, but I would love to think that that symbol will not be just an image on the documents that Canton produces in the future, that there will still be a few places in Canton that that symbol represents.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Paulette Abdullah, and I live on Thornwood. I have nothing prepared, so I'm just going to say how I feel. I lived in Glengarry, which is a very highly populated Polte sub. Couldn't wait to get there from Dearborn. Wow, it was amazing, excellent. But I found myself continuously going to Ridge Road, to Napier, just to feel a little bit of the congestion off of, the hustle and bustle. It was very peaceful. It was the road less traveled. And when I found that, I ended up moving there. Love it. It's beautiful. You know, that goes without saying, and, you know, things change, trends change, people need more housing. That's like the vibe. You know, we need more housing. There's a housing shortage. There's demand. You know, with that comes not only a destruction of the area, but it's really a destruction of Canton and the reputation. When people come to my house, and this is, I mean, I could put a wire on me and you could hear it throughout the summer, throughout, anytime someone comes over. "Do you live in Superior Township?" "No, it's Canton." "Oh, no, no, it's not Canton." "No, it's Canton." "Oh." "Do you live in Plymouth?" "This is Plymouth, right?" "No, it's Canton." No one can believe that that's Canton, because it's untouched. You know, it's like Canton Township, it should say underneath in small letters, "By Polte," you know? Polte has put its stamp everywhere. And when I saw that sign, I just could, it was, it's like we have, we're in danger. We're in danger. That's why we're here. Everything that we love is in danger. So it's basically big business against us. And we feel really small right now. We do. We need you. And it's not just for us to keep what we have, it's to preserve a little bit of what Canton used to be. You know? That's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really don't have a dog in this fight, but the other day I was traveling down Denton Road between Cherry Hill, excuse me, Cherry Hill and Michigan Avenue. And I saw all of that housing. Way too many houses per that area. I, I look at that as a future ghetto. There's, I understand that this township is kind of money-driven. That's what drives everything. But there's got to be a time when you say, just leave that property alone. I mean, I live on an acre and a half. I like it. By the way, Mike Schultz, four four five eight O D on. But I understand these people's plight. That is a beautiful area. My buddy lives on top of the hill right there. He's got three acres. And I looked at that property, and I thought, you know, it's too wet. I don't know what it takes for these people to get their wish, but you know what? There's got to be a time when you say enough is enough. I looked at, over there on Cherry Hill, when there used to be all the corn farms. And, you know, Canton was the corn capital of Michigan. Canton sweet corn was the best. Well, there's no more corn from Canton. It's done. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? I've got to see if I can get online here. Can you see online at all? Trying to see. Oh, there we go.
Bernadette, we already read her statement.
Bernadette.
So Paula.
Paula. I have a Paula here. So, okay, let me, oh. Okay, hang on. All right, hang on a second. We're going back to in the room. Let me find the clock. Okay, go ahead.
My name is Kevin Vaughn. I live at four nine seven eight zero Hanford Road. I've heard a lot of things tonight, a lot of educational things, things that are not. I've heard a lot of things tonight, a lot of educational things, things I had not imagined were going on and were possible in the world that we live today. And I tell you quite frankly, I'm confused, quite a bit confused. And with that in mind, what I'd like to do is invite the entire board up here, these folks over here, everybody here in Polte themselves, to come out and let's walk that property together and see what we're actually talking about versus everything else I've seen tonight, charts, papers, whatever. It's all good stuff, but until we actually get out there, see that tree, have people together, figure out what this really is, I think we're missing a lot. So, that's a suggestion I'd like to make.
Thank you. Can I see Paula online? Let me see if I can get Paula here.
Hit Participants.
There we go. All right, Paula. Paula, can you hear me? Paula?
Hi there, can you hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Great, thank you so much, good evening, everybody. I have sent notes to the Planning Commission for the March 7th meeting, so what I'm hearing at today's meeting is a resounding recap of what we've heard over and over. We believe that the Planning Commission performed its job properly and did do a review of the 10 standards of zoning ordinance and voted accordingly and correctly to deny the rezoning proposal. As a reminder, Polte had a representative at the meeting, so everything that was discussed and the barometers of such in the outline, I have to assume was reviewed and obviously heard by the Polte representative. According to Canton Township, the comprehensive plan is developed with input from residents and affected property owners. The township then implements community goals and objectives as derived from that input. It was very clear from the meeting correspondence and physical attendance and area residents that no one was in favor of this rezoning proposal, and I hear it again tonight. There was also a sense that the information presented was perhaps misleading, deceptive, and grossly incomplete. The hope is that this rezoning proposal request be denied and that the current zoning of this precious community parcel not be changed and remain as RR. I've been a Canton resident since 1972. I've lived in Windsor Park twice, I've owned a home in Brookside, Buckingham, and also Sunflower, and now Napier Road. My husband Paul and I own the property at 3950 Napier Road, and I hope it's on the record that if anyone is looking to get an easy way or whatnot on Napier, and if it crosses our property and we're given the request, you know, to give our permission, that will be denied. This acreage proposed is a watershed, it's not flat farmland. The applicant's proposal doesn't meet rezoning standards. Comparing Pilgrim Hills and the new Polte subdivision isn't an accurate comparison. There's flooding grading issues. I heard an engineer, and my neighbors, Teresa and Duncan are engineers by trade as well, and they've lived at the property, Teresa, all her life. I would say that my credentials are a little bit of an expert as well. I'm an insurance representative employed by Chubb Insurance Company, the largest publicly traded company insurance in the world. And I have seen case law and class action lawsuits where flooding comes in, and I don't frankly know why that our residence and our community is being put in this potential harms way. Again, I'm running out of time, all the other issues are valid, please walk the property, I live there. Anyone's welcome, come on down to walk it. Please consider the residence and deny this request. Polte can build elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment on the agenda items in the room? All right, thank you. Public comment is closed. We will do an agenda item, and then we'll have a public, there's a public comment at the end also, this is for agenda items. Youth Council, thank you, thanks for staying.
Timer, I like my three minutes, I usually don't get it. That'll make it official. I can appreciate all these folks coming out. Wetlands here in this township in Wayne County, you have a wetland, you be living next to it, and you think nothing's going to be built around you, they can swap that and put it somewhere else. Swap land back and forth in Wayne County, contractors, companies, and so forth, that's done on a regular basis. I never did get an answer from you guys, the township, on what your going to plan is for planting trees around the dump you own behind El George's, that 50-acre dump, why you're not planting them around it or on them. You just said you weren't going to do it. Next thing is, you bought a back, an excavating shovel, I never did get the final price on that and why you need it. I've explained many times, sewer tacks are 10-foot around here in these subdivisions, done many of them. Why do you need a shovel that reaches 25-foot? Backhoe will catch it in 15-foot. I also like to know, another thing is, on Michigan Avenue and right here on Canton Center Road, we have a program, beauty program, so be it, but I like to know why the trees are being planted right underneath the power lines. When there's a windstorm, guess what? The power goes out. Maybe we ought to knock on your guy's door and sleep on your couch, ask to do it. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, that ends public comment. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C2, consider contract amendments with Great Lakes Contracting Solutions LLC for the 2022 Residential Roads Project. C3, request approval for a one-year annual maintenance agreement for Tyler Technologies' New World Systems ERP. C4, request approval to amend the MERS 457 employer participation contributions. C5, request approval to extend incentive for vaccination against COVID-19 for part-time employees. And item C6, consider approval of severance and release agreement with Corporation Counsel.
Support. Made by Clerk Segret, supported by Trustee Berninski, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Consent calendar passes. Next item on the agenda is the general calendar. Item G0, which is, let me see. Yes, the former C1. Which is, consider remand of amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances regarding blessing rezoning to the Planning Commission.
Madam Supervisor, I move to remand the proposed amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances, the Charter Township of Canton, on the subject's tax parcel to the Planning Commission for additional findings of fact, including but not limited to, the required review considerations of Section 27.06, subsection D4 of the zoning ordinance in its motion.
Thank you. Motion made by Clerk Segret, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The applicant proposes to rezone this parcel located on the south side of Warren Road and east side of Napier Road from RR Rural Residential to R1 Single Family Residential. The subject parcel is 31.5 acres and shaped like a backwards L. Although the parcel is connected to both Warren Road and Napier Road, it is not a corner parcel. If the rezoning is approved, the owner's representative intends to submit a plan for detached single-family residential development on the site. At its meeting on March 7, 2022, the Planning Commission voted 6-0 to recommend denial of the application. However, the Planning Commission's motion did not include any findings of fact, including but not limited to, the required review considerations of Section 27.06, D4 of the zoning ordinance. Therefore, a motion to remand the application back to the Planning Commission is proposed for consideration by the Township Board of Trustees. If the application is remanded to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission must adopt findings of fact in its motion that include the required review considerations of Section 27.06, the D4 of the zoning ordinance. Any questions or comments by the board?
Michael?
Well, we received a substantial amount of public comment today, and my brain is kind of turning and thinking about everything, and most people have laughed, unfortunately, but. Oh. There's some additional confusion, I see. All right. But on top of that, one, nobody will be shut out of any process. It is illegal in Michigan to have a public meeting without public comment. So, anytime the Planning Commission meets, whether it's a public hearing or not, any individual is entitled to speak for whatever amount of time that body allows them to. So, anybody who shows up to future Planning Commission meetings will be able to address that body, whether there's a public hearing or not. So, that's first and foremost. Additionally, if their decision changed for any reason, and that was sent to us, you would be entitled to come back here and speak to us again. So, before any approval could be given, you get two more bites at the apple if we decide to remand the decision today. So, that's first and foremost. All decisions are made in public with public input in that regard, public comment. Outside of that, you know, a lot of comments were made about a lot of very important things today. A lot of it, rezoning decisions need to be made on pretty minimal criteria, rezoning criteria. So, floodwater would be something that would be handled at site review, not at rezoning, if that were going to be an issue. And there are many projects that get killed because of wetland issues. Even though they are rezoned, they don't pass the site plan review project because of flooding issues. There's a whole host of things that happen. Traffic, traffic engineering is discussed when it goes to approval from the county, right? The township doesn't have a body that will oversee and permit traffic. It is illegal for us to talk about traffic and flooding when we make a rezoning decision. And there are numerous court cases where developers sue local governments for breaking the law. They sue. A great example, there is a $60 million lawsuit that the city of Novi lost to a developer, Sandstone, for violating their rights. $60 million, and the 300 units got to be built anyway. So, not only did they build the 300 units, they got a check from the local community, well, their insurance company. Sterling Heights is another example where the city of Sterling Heights lost to Hillside Productions a $30 million lawsuit. So, when we remand a decision back to the Planning Commission, because we're telling you that the vote they made violates our ordinance, we're thinking about your tax dollars, we're protecting your tax dollars, because the decisions they make need to be very limited in scope. Wildlife is great. My wife and I have been driving through Pilgrim Hills for the last two years looking for a house, because I understand everything you're saying about that section of the township. It's gorgeous, it's beautiful, absolutely gorgeous. But every decision we make is going to be in the conformity of the law, and we're going to be very careful about what we say on the dais, because everything that we say will be brought forward in any type of litigation, any type of appeals process, we have to be very narrow. I can appreciate, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff was said tonight, and I appreciate it. Some of it is not necessarily factual. The land use, the future land use map that was brought up, that was in the 2017 DDA master plan, but that map, if you zoom in, is from 2012. That map was not changed by this body, this body lacked the legislative power to change that body in 2017. We gave ourselves that power because we're currently going through the future land use right now, but the Planning Commission was the one responsible. And you can't change a future land use map outside of going through the planning process, the five-year process. And we make sure we follow the Planning Enabling Act and the Zoning Enabling Act to a T, especially because in Canton Township, it is almost impossible to stop a development because of how much development has already occurred. So, if we do go about doing that, we have to ensure that we follow the law. And the first step in that is remanding a decision where a legal justification was not made for that decision. We can't talk about wildlife, or flooding, or brick, or how many, you know, that's not an appropriate conversation about a parcel of land and what it should be zoned. There are 10 criteria, you know, and we're going to stick to that. So, we're remand, I think, I'm comfortable remanding the decision back to the Planning Commission, because I don't want to spend more tax dollars. I don't want to write a check to Polte. I don't want to write a check to Polte and then watch them build the houses anyway, with the money we pay them.
Anyone else? Stephen?
So, I appreciate all your comments, I think we all appreciate all your comments tonight. I personally want you to know, and I believe my fellow board members, and even the two that aren't here tonight, would agree with many of them, or do agree with many of them. We, we absolutely don't want to spread development in this community, but that decision was made a long time ago in this community, when we opened the doors via the future land use map and zoning, lowering the zoning, well before any of us were sitting here at this table. We ran on a platform of preserving as much nature as we can in this community. We're trying to do that with the park that we thankfully were able to obtain down at Ridge and Ford Road. It hurts us every time we have to make a decision that goes against what we feel is not necessarily in matching our own core values. You know of the development down at Ford Road and Ridge Road? That was a court case. That was a loss by Canton Township before all of us were on this board. I was the only one on the board that the court forced us to approve that development. We had no choice unless we wanted to be in contempt of court. Legal counsel probably correct me of the right terms, but you get the idea. Remanding this back to the Planning Commission, as the clerk stated, is not the last step, but I will warn you, even if you have people on your township board that support your way of thinking, much of this is decided in the courts if we go against these things. So, we have done a good job over the years of trying to get developers to preserve things, to work with us. They want to be good partners. When the planning process starts, if it's approved by the Planning Commission, and then again, the rezoning by us, we try to do those things. Our municipal services team works with the developer, hears your things. We ask for meetings with the developers, with the community members. So, we are going to strive to do all those things. But I don't want to, like, jump up here and say that I'm giving you fault, I don't want to give you false hope. But at the same time, it's a process, we have to work through the process. And I've been through many of these meetings, the gentleman mentioned the land down Ridge Road, south of Ford Road. I cry every time a cornfield is developed again. But we, as a community, opened the floodgates decades ago, and it's really hard to put the genie back in the bottle. So, we'll have more comments when it comes back to us, but at this point, that's all I'll say for now.
Diane or Kate?
I'd just say that I heard you, and I agree with what my fellow members of the board have already said. I love walking out in the countryside, I love taking my dog for walks out, you know, in the countryside. I like a rural feel, I personally don't, I live in a more dense section of Canton than all of you do. But I definitely appreciate a more rural area. And, you know, it's, you know, I feel for all of you, I really do, because I can't imagine this happening. And we're doing what we can, but we are limited by what the law says we can do. And, you know, that's where we're at. I'm so sorry.
Diane, anything?
I too agree with my colleagues, and we all appreciate all the words that you have said. You know, very passionate about that part of Canton, I think we all are, but we have to follow the law, and, you know, the questions- But we have to follow the law, and, you know, the question to the body was about rezoning. So, you know, we do appreciate your words, and, you know, once it goes back to the planning committee and comes back to us, you're free again to speak, but we are, we are listening. We just have to make sure that we follow the law.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just one more thing to add. Madam Supervisor, and to David for our Municipal Services Department, if there is something in this decision, the criteria based in this decision that would allow us to, under that criteria, make a no decision, I would like to hear what it truly is that would not get us into, mired into a great lawsuit. So just for informational purposes and decision-making purposes, I've asked this before, and I've been disappointed with the answers before, not because they do a bad job, but just because property rights are upheld by the courts, it seems almost every time in my experience. But if there is a path, I'm interested in it. I think we'd all be.
Yeah. And as my colleague said, while you did hear from Polte, this is private land, and so we have to balance that. You have a private owner that wants to move forward, and that's what we have to balance. We have to balance the rights of everybody. Just also to let you know, our corporate counsel also said that it's possible that the court, if we, if the court could remand itself the matter back to the planning commission itself. So if this did go to court, they could start the process all over. So we want to make sure that we follow everything correctly. We follow the processes as we need to, so that we do everything right and protect the residents. I also want to say, just to give you a matter of what the process is. So this is just, again, just a rezoning. So remanding it back as we're required to make sure it's done correctly. In terms of, let's say, the next planning, the process is, is Eagle comes in, and they look at the land. So there's a process where Eagle comes in, they look at the land, the topography, so it's not just, yes, we approve it and start building. Eagle comes in, which is previously DEQ, Wayne County comes in, so there's a lot of other tests that determine what's done next. And also to let you know, when you do do developments, what happens is they are required to work with the residents and make sure everything, again, fits the neighborhood and so on. I'm just taking you down the path of where things go in a development process. So this is something we have to do. We have to make sure that we follow the law, that we're careful, because we have to protect all of Canton residents and make sure no lawsuits are filed, and protect the right of the owners of that property also. So by your property owners, people who own that parcel are also property owners, and they have rights also. So we have to be very careful with that. So this is what we need to do to remand it back. Okay? All right, so there's a motion on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is G1. Consider waiving banner sign permit fees for business adjacent to the Canton Center Road reconstruction project.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the banner sign permit fees for businesses adjacent to the Canton Center Road construction project beginning April 18, 2022, until the completion of the project.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Brudinsky. The applicant proposes to create a private drive to SI Court located on the west side of Denton Road between Geddes Road and Mott Road. The applicant proposes to split parcel number as listed 4286 Denton Road into three new parcels for the construction of single-family homes. Oops, sorry, that was G. That's the wrong one. Sorry. I'm sorry. Wrong one. The Canton Center Road reconstruction project will commence on April 18, 2022. We just had a big meeting on it. And it's planned to be completed in the fall of 2022. The project is a complete removal and replacement of Canton Center Road from Ford Road to Warren Road. Although northbound and southbound traffic will be maintained on Canton Center Road during the project, the township acknowledges there will be impacts on businesses along the Canton Center Road corridor. To support the businesses during the construction, it is proposed that the banner sign permit fees are waived for the duration of the Canton Center Road reconstruction project for businesses adjacent to the reconstruction project. Oh, David, do you have any additional questions or comments?
Not this time, though, but we'll be working very closely with whatever business comes in, so we can get a very quick turnaround time, so they can have minimal impact from the process of getting the permit.
Thank you. Anyone on the board? Kate?
Yeah, so I sat in on the meeting with the businesses last week, I think it was, and it was very informative, but also I understand that this project could take quite a long time, and so I am very happy that we are able to do this for our businesses.
Thank you. Anyone else? Great, yeah, so I think the businesses were very happy about this in terms of us going to them and having this meeting with them, and they are happy that, they asked that they could put the signs up by the building so people know they're open, so please don't forget to visit those businesses during the construction, and then we will have a great road at the end. All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Madam Supervisor, a point of privilege, I would like to request a five-minute recess.
Sure.
It's the longest public comment we've had in a long time, and I could really appreciate that stretch my legs.
All right, motion on the table. Support?
Support.
No need for a motion, it's your discretion.
All right, I'm timing you.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. Five-minute recess. Great, okay. We'll get back to it. Now we're on G2, right?
How come there's nobody here for years?
Okay. Ready, guys? Item G2. Consider site plan approval for private road.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the following resolution, the approval for the site plan for SI Court private road, whereas project sponsor has requested site plan approval for a private road on the subject tax parcel at 4286 Denton Road. And whereas planning commission reviewed the request and applicable criteria and voted 6-0 to recommend approval with conditions as the request meets the criteria of private road approval in section 2.10 of the zoning ordinance, now therefore be it resolved. The Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, has hereby approved the site plan for a private road on the subject tax parcel at 4286 Denton Road as the request meets the criteria of private road approval in section 2.10 of the zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided, subject to any remaining requirements of the Engineering Services Division, Fire Department, and Township Attorney.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The applicant proposes to create a private road to SI Court located on the west side of Denton Road between Geddes Road and Mott Road. The applicant proposes to split parcels 4286 Denton Road into three new parcels for the construction of single-family homes. The new private road to SI Court is proposed to serve as the access for all three proposed parcels to Denton Road. David, do you have anything to add?
Nothing, nothing at this.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Now you guys get to run out. Item G3. I know, where are they?
Made them earn it tonight.
That's all right.
Stay careful.
Thanks.
Item G3. Consider site plan for fast food drive-through restaurant Dunkin' Donuts.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the following resolution, the approval of site plan for Dunkin' Donuts. Whereas project sponsors requested the site plan approval for Dunkin' Donuts fast food drive-through restaurant use on the subject tax parcel located at the east side of Hagerty Road between Michigan Avenue and Old Michigan Avenue. And whereas the planning commission reviewed the site plan application and applicable criteria and voted 6-0 to recommend approval with conditions as the request meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance, now therefore be it resolved. The Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, has hereby approved the site plan for the Dunkin' Donuts fast food drive-through restaurant use on the subject tax parcel located on the east side of Hagerty Road between Michigan Avenue and Old Michigan Avenue, subject to the installation of stop bars and do not block intersection signs if permitted by Wayne County, and subject to all state, county, and township requirements.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The project sponsor proposes to construct a 1,836-square-foot Dunkin' Donuts fast food drive-through restaurant on a parcel located on the east side of Hagerty Road between Michigan Ave. and Old Michigan Ave. The parcel is split into two separate zoning districts. The western area is Zone C3, regional commercial, and the east area is Zone C4, interchange service. The fast food drive-through restaurant is proposed to be located entirely on the area of the parcel that is Zone C3. Fast food drive-through restaurants are special land uses in the C3 district. At its meeting on January 25, 2022, the Canton Township Board of Trustees approved the special land use for the fast food drive-through restaurant. At its meeting on March 2, 2022, the planning commission recommended approval of the site plan, subject to conditions. If the site plan is approved, the next step will be for the applicant to submit plans to the Engineering Services Division and Building and Inspection Services Division for review prior to construction. David, do you have anything to add?
Nothing else to add, Madam Supervisor?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the board?
I would just say, we went through this pretty in detail, right? Was that a zoning, rezoning, or something? I forget which step.
We were splitting the parcels.
Splitting the parcels, that's right.
Something like that.
Yep, okay.
We approved the special land use.
They even had some of the designs at that point in time to talk about, so I think we went through a lot of the issues with the traffic flow and all that at that time, and I'm comfortable with it.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G4. Consider a resolution to approve water and sewer rates for the 2022 fiscal year pursuant to Part 1, Chapter 74, entitled Utilities, Article 2, Division 2, Subdivision 2, entitled Schedule of Rates and Charges, Section 74 to 83.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a resolution as follows. Whereas Chapter 74, Division 2, Subdivision 2, Section 74-83, Schedule of Rates and Charges of the Code of Ordinance that the Canton Charter Township provides, the Township Board shall annually adopt the rates, fees, or charges charged for services provided by resolution to ensure the sound financial operation of the water or sewer system. And whereas the Director of Finance and the Director of Municipal Services Division have reviewed the operational condition of the township's water and sewer system and have recommended adoption of the rates set forth in the attached document, now therefore be it resolved, that all recommended rates, fees, or charges for services provided shall be implemented as of May 1, 2022.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens, or Steven?
No, it's fine.
Or Trustee Snyderman. Each year, staff prepares a comprehensive analysis of proposed rates and charges for water and sewer services based on the true cost of service. The board has adopted those recommendations, and it is now necessary to adopt a resolution to reflect the changes being proposed. In order to satisfy the revenue requirements for the 2022 fiscal year, the attached rate changes are recommended for adoption by the Board of Trustees. It is important to note that the proposed increases represent approximately half the current inflation rate. Additionally, the current use of cash balance will smooth out future impacts on rates. The new rates would take effect on all customers' bills starting May 1, 2022, and represent an average bimonthly increase of 2% to 3% to the user. Again, Dave, do you have anything to add?
Sure, I do want to add something. Trustee, that Treasurer Slavens has pointed out, there was a mathematical error on page three, or item B2A.
Highlighted?
You have, I think, a copy of what the accurate amount should be, showing it at $73.26. This is for the minimum sewage disposal bill, if you're not part of the township water system. The number we had was, we had doubled that number, so that was a mathematical error on MSC's part.
Okay, thank you. Wendy, do you have anything to add?
Sure, I put together a real quick, brief presentation that I can show, if I can share my screen.
Oh, sure. Let me see. How do we do this? Okay. Okay, you should be able to now.
Okay, oh, shoot. Bear with me. I'm current side. Okay. I just wanted to briefly go over what, kind of highlight what we talked about a couple weeks ago at the study session on March, or board meeting on March 22. So we had done a five-year projection of the, looking at what we thought the system would need over a five-year period. One of the things that we considered, and some of the factors, was the fact that Great Lakes Water Authority this year passed along an increase to us by 3.4%, a 3.4%. We also used inflationary increases for the next five years of a 3% inflationary increase, and one of the comments that was made is, well, the inflation right now is a lot higher than 3%, and it is. But what we looked at was the five-year average from 2017 to 21, and it was a 2.44%. So we rounded it up to 3%. However, it is important to note that to get that up to the 2.44%, the 2021 inflation was 4.7%. Otherwise, it would have been pretty significantly lower than that. And year-to-date, with March's inflation factors just were released, and those were 8.5% for the month of March. So taking the first three months of this year, the inflation was about 7.9%. So looking at this, and I know it's small, but when we talked about this, we also, we take a look at where the cash needs are of the system. So we look at where all of the expenses are. We factor in revenue items that can help offset any of the costs that we need to cover. We also take a look at some debt payments that we have to make, that we need some additional cash that doesn't hit the expenses of our budget, just because of the type of fund that the Water and Sewer Fund is. Then we also take a look at where our cash reserves are throughout the year. And at the end of 2021, our cash on hand is about $30 million, and under our current policy, our target cash balance is about $23 million. The minimum is lower than that, it's about $15 million. But in order to get to our target cash balance, we had about $7.8 million of available cash to use to help offset rates, to lower any increases to the residents. That's a one-time hit, or hit or help to the residents to utilize that. And that cash reserve is really there to help maintain our system. We have $200 million worth of assets that we have to maintain in our system, and this is based on the policy that was adopted years ago, back in the 2000s, late 2000s, when this policy was established, when we had our last water and sewer rate study. But that's where the policy came from. So over the, over these five years, next five years, where we were projecting to spend cash for 2022 is about $4.3 million of cash. Based on that, if you look at this slide, we were averaging, our goal was to try to average any user increases to a minimum amount. So we don't have any high, you know, any, any big years where, or low years, where you might have a one-year worth of low increase and a next year with a high increase. We were really trying to stabilize those rate increases. So if you look here for 2022, excuse me, the first chart on the left, using $4.3 million of cash over these five years, every year it ranges somewhere, you know, between 2% and 3.5% increases, depending on if you're a low user of the system versus a high user of the system. And it varies, because our water rates are very highly variable, so if you buy more water, your rate's going to be impacted more. One of the options, or one of the suggestions, was what if we used $5 million of cash this year? What would that do to the users? So that would lower the rate increase for 2022 to be about less than a percent. However, in '23, it would increase those if we, if we continue to try to maintain our cash balances around the target, we'd have to increase those. If you look at the bottom row here, over those five years, the low to high users, we're still going to need to get a 13% to 16% increase in our water rates, either under, either scenario. It's just a matter of the timing and how, how the rate actually is impacting the users in an individual year. Is there questions on that?
Questions or comments?
I have more, but I didn't know if you wanted me to stop for where we are. Okay. So with the use of the $4.3 million of cash, for a low user, the, of about 2,000 gallons every other month, bimonthly, the annual impact for that user is about a, with the proposed rate increase that we are proposing, using $4.3 million of cash, it's an annual difference of paying $5 a year. For that, for the low user, it's about a $19 increase per year for an average user of 8,000 gallons every other month, and about 40 gallons, excuse me, $40 per year for a high user of the system. If we were to do a five, use the $5 million of cash, it would be about a $2 increase per year to the low user, a $5 increase to the average user in about per year to the low user, $5 increase to the average user, and about a $10 annual increase to the high user for just '22. Also wanted to show this graph, which we haven't showed historically, but this shows where our water rates, our sewer rates and our fixed charges have been since 2011. So as you can see, our water rates have consistently gone up. They were at $3.99 per 1,000 gallons in 2011, and now they're currently at $6.55 per 1,000 gallons. Our sewer, though, if you take a look, our sewer rate back in 2011 was $6.40, and it was hovering around, you know, it got up to in 2017, $6.87, and then it started dropping. And that's when we moved out of the Wayne County system and moved into Yucca, which we knew the rate was going to go down, because Wayne County is a very expensive system. And we were able to get to one that had lower costs for us, and so that was really positive for us. But we did know that at some point in time, the sewer rates couldn't continue to decrease, because Yucca's costs are going to, are going to go up as well. So we're now at that point where those charges are starting to go up. But this last slide that I was going to show you, shows what, where have the average, and this is a bimonthly bill, where this has been for the low, average, and high user. So the blue line at the bottom is the low user, the orange in the middle is the average, and the gray line up top is the high average, the high user. So if you look at the low user, the low user in 2011, on a bimonthly basis, was paying about $31.32 every other month, every two months. And that's, that's actually stayed relatively flat for the low users over this time period. It's gone up to 35.64, based on the, on the rates we are recommending in '22. The average has, was at 93.66 in 2011, is now at 99.36 at '22. And the high user has fluctuated a lot through the years, has gone up. When our rates were going up higher, like we said, they're more, they're more variable, depending on, just because they buy more, depending on how our rates fluctuate. But in 2011, they were at $199 roughly every other month, and now in '22, with these rates, they'd be at $207 roughly. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I have a question. How much of our water rate increase from GLWA is a result of the Highland Park?
The, very minimal for us. The Highland Park debt for us is $3,000 a month, so it's a total $36,000 a year is what we pay. We've been paying that every year, so this isn't a new thing for GLWA to be passing along to us, so I'm not sure, I don't know what the percentage increase would be for that, because we have been getting charged that all along. But it's, we pay Highland, or we pay Great Lakes Water Authority total of $12 million a year or so, and $36,000 of it relates to Highland Park.
Oh, so it is safe to say that the rate increase from GLWA is not substantially driven by the Highland Park debt?
Absolutely, that's absolutely fair statement.
Okay. And what, I don't remember, what was the cash balance and the fund balance?
The cash balance is $30 million, approximately, $30 million at the end of '21, December of '21.
I, okay. And, it's interesting.
Any other questions? Kate, you had something?
Yeah, Wendy, could you go back to the slide that shows the projections based on the two different amounts of cash used?
This one?
Yeah, I think so. That has the rates on it, right?
This just has the percentage increases.
Right, that's what I meant.
Yeah, the percentage increases.
So if we used more cash now, then it looks like in order to maintain that, that cash balance, we need to then, you know, over the years, do maybe like a more steep increase at some, some years to keep that.
Yeah, so if you notice on this slide, years '24, '25, and '26, actually have the same rate increases for both, either scenario, because we're trying to catch up, basically. We're, we are proposing to use the same amount of cash in the, in the future years that we were proposing with the $4.3 million. So what we were proposing was using the $7.8 million, which was the difference between our $30 million of available cash today, and the $23 million of cash that is our target cash balance, and spread that out over a five-year period. With using more cash, that $700,000 of more cash, that actually dips below the target cash balance of $23 million. So we were not proposing to add any more cash to it in future years. We were, at the end of that five-year, we'd be below, assuming the target cash balance stays at $23 million at the end of a five-year period, that would put us below our target cash balance by about $600,000 or so.
Okay, so that would put us below, and that's not recommended. Okay. I also was wondering about the water and sewer infrastructure, and, you know, it's aging in Canton. Do you know, like approximately, what, like if we had, if we looked at all of our water and sewer infrastructure, like what would be the, the amount of money that's been invested in that over the years?
Currently, we have, I believe our depreciated value of that asset is about $200 million. So it's not the initial investment, but the depreciated value of that system is currently $200 million or so.
Okay, but if we had to fix it, we're not paying depreciated prices?
Correct, we're paying new prices.
Thank you.
Rockland?
I noticed with the second scenario, with the $5 million, our rates would go up quite a bit more the second year, which is quite concerning. And like you had said, the water is very, it's variable, so if we don't sell what we say we're going to sell, to pay, we still have to pay for it. And so we would have to dip into our, our fund to balance that out.
Correct, correct. And again, this is a projection, so we're not sure what's going to happen this year. If we, we are budgeting, we are basing our rates on the fact that we're going to sell 2.5 billion gallons of water. If we don't sell 2.5 billion gallons of water, we won't get all of the cash that we are expecting in our projection. If we sell more than 2.5 billion gallons of water, however, we'll end up with more cash, which we take a look at every year. And this is really the first time we've looked at this on a long-term basis, to try to make sure we're not having any big fluctuation, any big fluctuations in any individual year. So that was really the goal when we were looking at that, to make sure we were kind of stabilizing any rate impact to the residents. So, so this is, you know, looking in a nutshell with assumptions that we're making today, best on, based on our best estimated guesses, using historical information as well. Our average water sold in the past is 2.5 billion gallons of water. So, you know, fingers crossed that we, that we sell that amount and this holds true. But if we sell more, we're going to have more available cash next year, which we can then, you know, look at the next five years and decide, the board can decide what they want, how they want to spend that, and when they want to allocate that as part of the rate setting process.
You and David both worked very hard on this, so thank you, appreciate it.
Steven?
So, thank you also for all the time you spent with us on ensuring we understood the numbers. One question I had was, did you base in, in your number, in your projections, did you base an increase number from GL, Great Lakes Water Authority?
Yeah, we would have, we assumed a 3% increase.
Okay, all right. So, I mean, first of all, I love the five-year projection, and I think that's great. It helps people for planning purposes, even though it's just an estimate, but still, it's something that we can point towards and people can, can look at, because it wasn't so long ago that people had no idea how much their water was going to go up year to year, and in the, in the 2000s, there were some pretty hefty increases, I mean, in double digits in some years, close to 15% or 20%, and it was quite scary for residents. So to be able to plan and have it be so consistent, that's something that is, to me, truly amazing, thinking back on those times. And it's due to work of this board and previous boards to build a water tank, to help us obtain water at lower rates, and as you mentioned, move the sewer system to a less expensive system that's more nearby. And you can see the effect of it finally coming to fruition. I'm assuming some of the debt of the water tank coming off is baked into these numbers?
Correct.
That's correct. So we're finally paying off the water tank, it allows us to do this, and I just love the consist, and the fact that we are now doing five-year planning out of our strategic plan and analysis that we put forward, I think it's good news for, I mean, increases are never good news, but the fact that it is pretty much an increase that we received from Great Lakes Water makes it understandable, and the fact that last year and probably this year, it's significantly lower than what inflation is, to me, it's, I think, I think it's something that I'm quite comfortable with. So thank you.
Michael?
Two weeks ago, I recommended that we use $700,000, which is less than 2.4% of our fund balance, because I didn't think it was right to raise water rates during this year. And I wasn't going to speak tonight, but unfortunately, it seems like everybody's had a lot of conversations in the last two weeks and had coordinated messaging. I didn't know that my plan, which is half-baked here, was going to be put up on a slideshow as a straw man, and beaten up, without any type of like thought brought to it or trying to make it work. So I do feel a little surprised, because I didn't see that this was going to be presented tonight. I am a little upset that a caricature of what I had proposed two weeks ago at a public meeting with, received zero comments from anybody else, would be discussed in that last two weeks, and then brought forward, again, I would say half-baked, to be broken, beaten apart by everybody else here. So I'm voting no today, because I don't think it's irresponsible to not raise water rates when you're already above the target fund balance. I actually think that that's immoral, to raise water rates when you're above the target fund balance. And I would appreciate it if we had a conversation like this two weeks ago at a public meeting.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I guess, oh, I'm sorry.
So, Michael, respectfully, I thought your proposal of adding the $700,000 was an interesting one, and so I asked Wendy to try to do that projection for us, and that's why it's here tonight.
Yeah, I guess I'll speak to the adding the $750,000, which isn't a bad idea. I mean, I, I like the fact that we're looking at the reserves we have and the dollars that we may have in excess, and trying to apply them to, to save the company, the residents of the community money in the short term. But looking at the numbers, it doesn't, in my mind, help in terms of evening out things, and that was more important to me. If the board decided to go with the other one, I would be, you know, I would be fine with it, but to me, I like the consistency of the numbers and the percentages increases, and I don't think using $750,000 more in the first year instead of the second year buys us all that much. But if that's the way the board decides to go, I'll, I'll be fine with it.
I just want to echo the same thing, the question at the last board meeting you brought up respectfully, what about using $5 million? So we want the residents to know, if we chose to use that, yeah, we won't raise your rates that much, but wait till next year, then they will go up. And I know historically, that in the past, not our board, another board had to raise it by 20% one year, and then 16% the next year. So we want to be cautious, we want to try and make sure that we smooth out the rates year after year, so residents aren't getting a 20% increase or a 16% increase. So I think this was, I appreciate you bringing this to the board to show us the two scenarios. And that's fine, you know, we all, you know, we all have a vote, we all can vote how we want, but I think, you know, the goal was a five-year projection, so we have some idea of where the water rates will be for the year. And, and so it wasn't a planned coup or anything, it was a, you had asked for the $5 million.
I didn't ask for the $5 million.
You, well, you had asked.
That was a recommendation from Finance, was $5 million. That was plugged in by Wendy.
Okay, it was brought to the attention, and we want the public to see if we were to use that.
Right. Well, and I, and I can appreciate that, but I would ask, the $30 million in that reserve fund, where'd that money come from?
It came from the users.
From the residents. So that's money people paid for water they didn't use. And we've got 100% fund balance. And I've never seen an organization with 100% fund balance before, and our argument is, in five years, it might dip below the target fund, the target fund balance, which is still $8 million above the legal minimum fund balance. That's our concern. Okay. Well, I think people are having a hard economic year, and I thought it was reasonable to take 2.3333% of the fund balance to try to minimize or eliminate a water rate increase, but, and I wasn't going to speak tonight, but then I saw a joke of what I had talked about presented, and I decided to speak tonight, because I don't think that was, I wish I would have at least been involved in coming up with the second option, as opposed to just saying like, well, you know, and here's a second option, which is just like not even what I would have, would have actually presented, if we were being serious about it. But you guys all talked, it's, I get it.
What is the second option? I mean, would you want to explain that a little bit, Wendy, in terms of what you looked at, the various options you looked at?
Yeah, so after, at the last study session, when the question was raised about what could we do, you know, how much would we have to use of cash to try to lower that balance? When I, after I ran that and was running the projections out, you know, there was, it became evident that what could potentially happen in year two. And so then, when we had that, when we had that realization, I brought that forth to the three full-time electeds, and we talked about that briefly. The clerk did have another meeting that he had to, that he had to leave for, but we wanted to make sure everybody understood. So then we had, we ran this scenario, we ran a, using 4.
I'm sorry, I had another meeting I had to leave for?
Correct, you had a meeting with the judge.
Which meeting was that?
It was in between our.
With all full three dumb electeds, or was it the meeting with Diane and myself in the finance conference room, that I did not know I was going to be, going to that meeting? But I had a separate meeting with Judge Giroux and Police Chief Chabot.
Correct, correct.
And so that meeting was placed on my calendar earlier that day, and I did not see it put on my calendar.
Correct, correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Correct.
That was the meeting that we were going to?
That is absolutely accurate.
Okay.
That is 100% accurate.
15-minute period of time.
We are trying, we are trying to get, we are trying to get, yeah, we were trying to get some, just get some education around there. So, so we had this meeting, we had, then I had a further conversation with Diane at that point in time, and we ran a few different scenarios. She asked us to look at the $5 million, she asked us to look at a 4.5 million, and the 4.5 million was, I think, ended up reducing the rates for a low user from a $5 annual increase to a $4 annual increase. So, you know, it was, basically, the range for the low user was going to range from, if we used $5 million of cash, it was going to be a dollar per year increase, as opposed to a $5 increase, per year increase with the 4.3 million. I think the high user ranged from $10 increase if we used $5 million to a $40 increase per year. So it was a, you know, marginal increase, depending on, depending on which amount of cash that we would have used. And then I was asked to proceed with the 4.3, and that's where we were today. and that's where we were today.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, there's a motion on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is request budget amendments to the 2022 capital improvement plan.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the attached budget amendments required for the 2020-2021 CIP bond projects.
Support?
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. In 2019, the Township Board approved a five-year capital improvement plan for just under $30 million in capital projects to be completed throughout 2019 through 2023. The township originally planned to spend approximately $14.9 million in 2020 and $6.2 million in 2021. However, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, project construction and progress was delayed. After putting all CIP projects on hold for a large portion of 2020 and 21, we are ready to proceed again. As a result, various budget amendments are needed to move project budgets originally planned for 2020, 2021 into 2022. Wendy, do you want to comment on that?
I have nothing further to add unless there are questions.
Questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G6, request approval to migrate to the Microsoft Government Cloud in Office 365.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to enter into a three-year enterprise agreement with Microsoft, facilitated by Dell Computers, and waive the Township Purchasing Policy Request for Proposal to Meet a Project Completion Date of July 21, 2022.
Court?
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer, I'm sorry, by Stephen Snyderman. The Township's email service is currently hosted in the Microsoft Office 365 Retail Cloud. ITI has been directed to migrate the Township's email systems to the cantonmi.gov domain, and to further move operations of that domain to the Microsoft Government Cloud to gain access to numerous operational and security benefits. This requires the purchase of Microsoft licensing and the contracting of professional services from a third party to assist the Township's ITI department with the initial configuration of the new Canton, new cantonmi.gov domain within the Microsoft Government Cloud. To meet the July 1, 2022 deadline and have this new solution fully operational by the August primary election, the ITI department is requesting that the Township Board waive the purchasing policy requirement of publishing a request for proposal for this project. The ITI department did solicit proposals and costs from Dell Computers, CDW Government, and Avalon Technologies, and selected those which offer the best value. Victor, do you want to add anything?
Not at this time.
Any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Ma'am Supervisor, I further move to create two purchase orders, one in the amount of $33,770 to Avalon Technologies, and another to Dell Computers in the amount of $153,313.80 to approve the attached budget amendment.
Court?
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Any questions?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion passes. Okay, and there are only two there. Right, yep. Item G7, consider renewing the license plate reader annual subscription.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the renewal of Vigilant Solutions license plate reader annual subscriptions through Vigilant Solutions LLC in the amount of $12,165.
Court?
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The Police Department is requesting to renew its annual subscription for its license plate reader system through Vigilant Solutions LLC in the amount of $12,165. Director Bow, do you have anything to add?
This is a, a program that's real helpful in not only solving crime, but it also helps needless contacts with individuals when you're looking for suspects of the same type of car. It cuts down on time. We use resources in the field looking for vehicles. So, we find it to be financially a good idea, and it cuts down on a little bit of risk, having needless contacts with people, trying to understand more about the situation. But we use it for Part I crimes. So, I think it's an important thing to note, too. These are not for low-level issues. They're happening in our community. They're community problems that we use this resource for.
Any questions or comments? Stephen?
Thanks, Chief. So, I was going to ask you what you just said at the end there, and that's good to know. I think it was a concern of, of the previous board when we approved it, that it would, might be used for things that our values don't think they should be used for. And I was just wondering, in that light, is that something that the, the Citizens Committee has discussed at all, the use of that?
No, we, we haven't discussed that item, because it hasn't come up, and it says complaint or use of force issue. There is an educational point that comes up from time to time within that committee, so we could bring that up to the committee, just to understand what your feelings are.
Might be a good discussion, yeah. Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Oops, I pulled the wrong one. Item G8, consider approving purchase of high-speed address printer.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of a high-speed address printer, or AS650, from the current vendor, Quadient, and to amend the budget as follows, as attached.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Clerk's Department has seen historic increase in demand for mail ballots. Due to this demand, the Clerk's Office must address tens of thousands of mail pieces in any given year. A high-speed address, address printer will allow the Clerk's Office to reduce paper waste and increase the accuracy and speed in which it addresses these systems. Michael, do you want to, to add anything?
Nope.
All those in favor of the motion, say, Kate?
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
So it says that it's going to reduce paper waste. Could, could you clarify how it's going to do that?
Currently, we print, let's think about November of 2020. We had 42,000 ballots that we mailed to people. We printed on 42,000 labels, which is very expensive paper that has a sticky back, and then we attached it to a return envelope. So 42,000 labels. With this device, we would print 42,000 names and addresses directly onto the envelopes themselves, which would eliminate 42,000 sheets of address labels, both purchased by the community and thrown into the garbage afterwards.
Thank you.
Other questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G9, consider appointments to the Historic District Commission.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the appointments of Karen Krebs and Greg King to the Canton Historic District Commission for a three-year term effective through April 30th, 2025.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Due to the resignation of Scott Butner and Joan Lager, there are two openings on the Historic District Commission. The vacancy was advertised in the Focus and other social media channels. Karen Krebs and Greg King submitted applications. Karen has historic district commission experience from another community, as well as a degree in anthropology. She interviewed with the committee on 3/22/22, and the interview committee agreed she would be a good fit to fill one of the vacancies. Greg King recently retired from Canton Township, was the employee liaison to the HDC during his employment. His extensive knowledge of HDC policies and processes. Greg also interviewed with this committee on 3/22. The committee agreed he would be a tremendous asset to the HDC. Are there any questions?
Michael?
I don't have any questions. What I will do is thank Joan Lager, who used to be my secretary in the Clerk's Office, for her service on the HDC, and wish her well in her second retirement from Canton Township. And then my second item is to, I don't know Karen, but I, I mean, I've seen her background. I'm very impressed. Greg King, on the other hand, has been a huge asset to the HDC, who has also recently retired from Canton Township. He is an avid historian. He wrote a book on the maintenance, historic preservation of cemeteries from a municipal standpoint, and I'm very excited about him on that committee going forward. There's not many people as committed to Canton Township or historic preservation with his knowledge. So, I'm very happy with the approval, the recommendations of the Appointment Committee. Thank you.
Kate?
So, I had the honor of being on the committee this time around, my first time. And it was very interesting. I am very excited about both Karen and Greg being appointed to the committee. I would like to point out that not only does Karen have a degree in anthropology, she's a, she has a doctorate, and she is an archaeologist. And I think she is going to be an excellent member of the committee. Really excited to, to see how she works out. I'm sure she's going to be great. And Greg, I mean, the institutional knowledge that he has would be very much missed if he were not appointed. So, I am very happy that I got to sit in on the committee this time, and very happy to recommend them tonight.
Stephen?
Well, I just want to thank Kate for sitting in for me on the committee. I wasn't, I was unable to attend on that day, and it was unfortunate, because I was really looking forward to talking to both of them. So I will look forward to talking to them once they're in their, seated in, in their positions. So, thank you.
Anybody else? No, Karen, it's really, Greg was really excited, and I know he's going to be a great add to continue this. And Karen, as, as Kate said, her experience is extensive, and so I'm looking forward to what she can bring to our community. All those in favor of the appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Okay, the next item we have on the agenda is public comment. I don't see anyone else in the room. Does the staff have any comments to make? No?
Look online, or?
Online, I see, I don't see any hands. If you can raise your hands. No public comment, no public comment, no public comment. The next item is board comment. Michael, would you like to start?
Just, Canton voters, pay attention to the mail. We have done our redistricting for the purposes of reapportioning precincts, and the State of Michigan is making the, the changes to the, what we call the Qualified Voter Index, Qualified Voter File, which is the list of all registered voters and where they live. And you will be getting a notice in the mail about your new precinct number, which most people don't know and don't really care about, unless you're a precinct delegate, and your voting location. And we are telling everybody this year that their voting location has changed. In even the event that it hasn't changed, if, if they catch us, we'll probably give them a prize or something like that. But most people's polling locations have changed this year, and we're going to do everything we possibly can to communicate that, and that will start now. And the first step is going to be mailing out the new, the new voter ID card, the voter cards, yeah, voter ID cards. So, keep an eye out for that. And then, May 1, we will be doing passports in Canton Township for the first time since, since 2012. So, it's been, it's been 10 years, and we're ready to get back into the game.
Thank you, Diane.
I just want to apre, thank all the residents that came in to speak tonight. We always appreciate what you have to say. And with the weather warming up, I hope everybody's able to get out and enjoy all of our great parks. And that's it.
Thank you, Stephen.
I want to wish Corporation Council Kristen Kolb well on her future endeavors. She joined shortly before I joined this board, and so for the last 10 years, I've enjoyed working with her. So, I wish you well.
Kate?
Thank you. Ditto what Stephen said. I wish Kristen all the best in her future. I also wanted to say Ramadan Mubarak to our friends and neighbors that are celebrating Ramadan this month. And also wanted to mention that April is Autism Awareness Month. I have a son who is on the spectrum, so it's important to me. And I know that there are a lot of other families in Canton that it's important to also. So, please remember our neighbors and friends and children that have autism.
Thank you. A couple of things. We've had a couple retirements come through here, and they've been welcomed. And there's one that didn't come through, but we just wanted to mention that Police Officer Andrew Curry, he was a 25-year veteran in Canton. So, I don't know if you want to say anything else, Chad. We said goodbye to him a couple weeks ago.
Send Officer Curry out with a nice little celebration out back. He's an exceptional police officer, and I think some of you might have met him through his years at the school, and he was just a credit to how we develop people, and he, he finished very strong. So, it was wonderful to see him retire healthy and happy, so.
Thank you. We also, we had an event in the Leisure Services in the Summit approximately two weeks ago, where our staff, a person collapsed, one of our residents collapsed, and our staff members were able to assist with an AED, and until our firefighters got there. And we're very proud of our Summit staff and how well they are trained in helping our residents. So, thank you for doing that. Any other questions or comments? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Support.
A motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Meeting adjourned.